Good evening. I will call the Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, Federal Way City Council Meeting to Order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am welcome. This is a little bit out of the ordinary. We don't, I don't, I can count the number of times we've had a council meeting on Wednesday on one hand, but obviously this meeting follows the Fourth of July, which was yesterday, and so we will go through it. We've got a good agenda for tonight. We've got a motion to amend tonight's agenda. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move to amend the agenda to add an Item B to council business in order to discuss awarding the Stage Draperies contract for the Performing Arts and Event Center.
All right, there's been a motion, a second is ready discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's granted, the motion is amended, or the agenda is amended. All right. Presentations, Fourth of July report, Red, White, and Blues Festival Report, Parks Director John Hutton.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of City Council. I just want to report on laster day's events, although all of you were there. I want to share with the public as well. First, thank you to you for all of your support and being there. This was our 24th Annual Red, White, and Blues Festival. We had great weather, great crowds, great music, and great fun for everybody. There were zero significant incidents. As far as anything bad happening, it was all good. The food vendors did well. All of the bands were well received by our crowds. Our emcee was great, was tremendously engaged with our crowds, had great fun with the kids. That was Alex Zerby, back by popular demand. We just really enjoy him. He's terrific. The sound was fantastic from Black Dog Sound. Our fireworks and soundtrack were just off-the-charts spectacular. We could not have been happier with how that went. I would like to thank all of our sponsors, including Waste Management, Red Canoe, Fore Culture, Federal Way Mirror, Jimmy Johns, and the Federal Way Arts Commission. And again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for all of your support, not only this year but every year. That event gets bigger and better every year, and we just couldn't be more happy. Our entire staff did a fantastic job, behind-the-scenes work that starts months in advance of this event, all the way up to setup and cleanup, and you could go out there right now today and not know that a festival with about 20,000 people happened there. It's completely clean and looking great. I believe we're playing ball out there on the softball fields, which looked roughly like Afghanistan at about midnight last night. So it's pretty amazing when you see that. So I want to take a special moment to thank our Federal Way Police Department, who without them, there's no way we could produce an event with this many people and stay safe and have everybody have a great time and a great family atmosphere like that, along with South King Fire, who does a lot of great stuff for us, from inspection and safety, lookouts for making sure that everybody's going to be safe from a fire and rescue standpoint. They also take care of our aid station for us for lost children and any kind of a Band-Aid that might be needed. So it was a really fun event, and I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Council, any questions of John? No question? Oh, go ahead.
I don't have a question, but aside from all the support that came from all the different groups, I just want to say the grass was greener than, it looked like Ireland on St. Patrick's Day. I don't know, I'm borrowing that phrase, but it looked absolutely beautiful. So very great job by your staff to get it.
Thank you very much. I should also mention that it wasn't just Red, White, and Blues yesterday. At about 5:30 in the morning, our staff showed up to run our Miles from ESO run, which is a tremendous event on its own, run on the very same day. So we're producing two major special events same day with the same staff, which is pretty cool. And Councilmember Salsky, may I?
[laughing]
Thank you for that permission. So I'd like to let you know that several of you were at the run, including the mayor and Councilmember Honda, several others, I believe, were there, and Councilmember Salsky showed up, and he was kind of goaded into entering the race in his tennis shoes, not even running shoes, khaki shorts and a tee-shirt, and entered the race, hadn't run in two years, and proceeded to win his age group. That's pretty amazing. So congratulations, Councilmember Salsky, on your competitive spirit and your athleticism. So thank you very much, and thank you again for your support for that event. I'd like to let you know that this year's event took us over the $100,000 mark that we've donated to Miles from ESO with that run alone, $100,000. So, pretty amazing. Thank you very much for all your support.
Very good.
Any other questions?
No.
Well-run event last night. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And actually, at the Miles from ESO, I've never seen that many folks there for the Miles from ESO. It was great turnout. Okay, now we've got Deputy Chief Sumter, who's going to give us a fireworks enforcement report.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight representing the Police Chief Annie Wong, who is in South Korea by special invitation at a law enforcement, International Law Enforcement Symposium. He's as loved there as he is here, evidently. I would like to begin also by talking about the event last night. It is very rare when there is an event with that many people jammed into that small of a space at Celebration Park where there isn't something significant that emerges from it. And in my conversations with the aid unit as they were leaving last night, they treated some Band-Aid injuries, some scuffed knees and elbows, and that was really it. In terms of injuries, there were almost none. There were no fires. There were no criminal activities to speak of. It was very well done, and my hat's off to the Parks Department. The planning was outstanding. In terms of fireworks yesterday, we had some, didn't we?
[laughing]
Not just at the park. You can see some statistics here. These are, the CFS means Calls for Service. You can see the numbers are very close. This year, during the days, June 27th through July 5th, there's only five calls for service difference between last year and this year in that same time period. Total number of fireworks-related calls, a fewer, less requests for police service this year, but the numbers are still fairly close, and that number can bump a little bit from year to year. I'll get back to what I think that means. I'll tell you what I think that means right now. Although it appears that fewer people are violating the law, what we are seeing is that those who intentionally violate the law are going bigger. They're getting easy, individuals get easier access every year to bigger, more spectacular, and louder fireworks, and I think that's what we're getting into. More people are complying, but those who will not are just showing blatant disregard and going as big as they can go. Here is the enforcement after action last three years. You can see that in 2015, we had 52 tickets issued, 23 warnings. That was a big year. Last year, a little less, and this year, half as much as two years ago in terms of tickets issued. The warnings, the 10 warnings, we have a philosophy that we're going to ticket everybody we catch, but when we catch an eight-year-old with sparklers, they're not going to get a $300 ticket. They do get a warning, and we do take their sparklers. And we confiscated approximately 200 pounds of fireworks last year. That's another thing. If we, no matter who it is that we catch, no matter what their age is, whether it's a warning or a ticket, we confiscate the contraband, and we destroy it later. Couple of reasons why. You're right now wondering why that number is lower. We see that those who are willing to intentionally break the law, they are taking evasive maneuvers. For instance, we had reports last night that they had lookouts stationed at the end of the street, just watching for the police to come, and then it'll shut down as the police car rounds the corner. Everybody has scattered. Or they're moving more into their backyard or their side yard, in the backyard where they know police need consent or a search warrant to go. We can't just jump over the fence and grab them. And so they're intentionally making it a little bit more difficult to take enforcement action, but that doesn't mean we will stop. We will not stop. We will be out there again next year, and we will go out every time somebody calls 911 or our non-emergency line reporting a fireworks violation. We will go, and we will try to catch them.
All right, Councilmember DuKlo.
I think I know what you mean, because for the first time in our neighborhood, between 10 and 12 for two hours solid, we had bottle rockets and everything going off. And normally, the only disturbance we have are things going from northeast Tacoma, but this was in the neighborhood, and this was from people that I don't think lived in the neighborhood, but they were there setting them off.
It could be. This also brings up another good point. We can't stop the education phase either.
Right.
One man approached me at the park last night. He said, "I see the sign there at the entrance that says 'No Fireworks' is on the list." Does that include sparklers? Yeah, that includes sparklers. You can't do sparklers in the park either. What if I bring my kids out here in the parking lot? Can we do our sparklers in the parking lot? No, sir. No fireworks of any kind anywhere in the city, and he didn't seem to know.
And that's what I'd like to see. You know, we have those portable signs that talk about things, that this event is coming. When it comes to be this time, put out, fireworks are not allowed any place in this city, except at the park, done by the city or something like that.
Yeah.
And put it on the major roads so that people at least can see that, and give them a number to call.
Education and enforcement, we cannot let up.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Well, it's been noisy the last 10 days or so around my house, and last night was pretty bad. Are you still enforcing the no fireworks tonight?
Absolutely.
And tomorrow night?
Absolutely. Yes. We are. We've had extra officers out there since last Saturday, above and beyond the normal patrol staff.
Okay. Something that was, has been floating around on Facebook, and we all have to love Facebook, is that residents said that they were calling 911 for fireworks, and were told that officers were too busy to respond. And I find that hard to believe, but I want to hear from you that that didn't happen.
Well, I can't say that somebody didn't say that over the phone. I don't know. But if we get a 911 call, we go to it. Doesn't mean we will get there within two minutes, but we go to it.
Okay.
Yeah, we go.
Thank you.
Valley Communication, if people call 911, you know, Valley Communications will triage the call. If it's a life safety issue, if it's a...
Correct.
You know, we've obviously got to make sure that if there's a crime, you know, a person crime where there's somebody at risk, well, they'll only go there first.
Yeah. Fireworks calls get prioritized in the mix with everything else.
That's right.
But we go to them.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, Councilmember Salsky, then Councilmember Sef.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Farrell. Just another comment about that, and thanks for the presentation. I'll tell you, in my neighborhood, which is up by Sherwood Forest, I, all the way up until last night, the, I just didn't observe much activity. I mean, we didn't have any fireworks hardly at all going on, but last night, I think everybody saved it for then because it was like a war zone.
Yeah.
But...
It went off.
Yeah. I do know that a neighbor was called upon, or called in on, and there was a response. So, anyway, just an observation.
Very good.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Appreciate it. Okay, now on to the, oh, I'm sorry, Lydia, sorry.
Thank you. So you were emphasizing education, and I'm wondering, and if we don't do this, if we could have it on our TV channel, June, July, to educate people and make them more aware of...
You start at the end of June.
I know they're aware, but, yeah.
Yeah.
But still, just to emphasize and bring that, and like you said, this person didn't know and had all these questions.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if that would be a good way.
We put it out on our social media accounts. Evidently, that doesn't reach everybody.
Yeah.
But we can't stop.
And neither does the TV station, but, I mean, our Channel 21, but I think it's just one more to add to the list of media you use.
Correct.
But thank you very much.
Yeah, maybe next year, we'll do a PSA.
Sure.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to Mayor's Emergency Issues and Report. First, we've got our Community Development Director, Brian Davis, following up on a question of concern brought up at the Decatur Neighborhood Briefing. So regarding pollution concerns. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As the mayor said, we had a neighborhood meeting at Decatur High School, June 14th, in which a question was brought up specifically by Chuck Duffy, who's here in the audience today. He and I have corresponded over the last while on this issue. And the question was, has there been an increase of pollution from the Tacoma Tide Flats? And if so, what can be done by citizens? And also, if that's the case, what can the City of Federal Way do to help out citizens that, if this is happening? So we have, we have looked into this issue, and again, I personally want to thank Mr. Duffy for our conversations and researching this issue. So the regulatory authority for, got trigger happy, for this issue is with the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. They, for those who aren't aware, they were chartered back in the late 60s under the Clean Air Act, and they are governed by both elected local officials and municipal executives. This is a picture of their board, and you can see that they vary across jurisdictions throughout the Puget Sound area. If they're, if a citizen experiences a, what they believe to be an air pollution incident, and it's usually coincides with odor or dust or noise even, there is a, there is a process to do this through the Clean Air Agency. And they can either submit it by phone, they can call them, or they can go online. This is a screen capture of their website in which they could file a complaint online. They could do the traditional method of sending it by mail as well. Website is likely the most efficient because that gets the information logged in the system right away, and it also prompts an immediate investigation by their, onsite investigation by their staff in which they can visit the location of where they think the odor is originating from. And the staff there, I communicated with them, and they are quite familiar with the, with the Tacoma Tide Flats and have done several investigations of various businesses down there. So the process, oh yeah, sorry. So in addition to complaint-driven processes, they also do active patrols of various sites, and specifically for the Port of Tacoma, it's, the businesses down there. Now, this is a picture right here of one of the businesses that had an asphalt tank overflow. As you can see, the tank is, on that left side, is coated with asphalt, and this was an incident that occurred in early February, and this generated a lot of inquiry from nearby residents, and they did an investigation and, excuse me, did contact this business and demand an immediate correction to the, to the activity that caused this. So this is an example. They're given a notice of violation, very similar to our complaint process here at City Hall, but this is, this is quoted on one of their violations, that on February 14th, this company caused or allowed the emissions of air contaminants, odors of asphalt in sufficient quantities, characteristics, and duration which unreasonably interfered with the complainant's enjoyment of life and property. And so that was given to the business, and also a follow-up saying, okay, now that we've substantiated this, you need to either respond to it saying, "We understand," or they can appeal it if they disagree with, with that, with that allegation. So again, this is a, this is the, sort of the, there's the nice approach, and then the, on the backside is this other approach of saying, don't, basically, don't ignore us. You've got 10 days to do something or to respond to us unless you want further action of, from the agency, which would likely involve with stiffer penalties. So if you wanted to, if you're a citizen, or elected official, or staff, or it doesn't matter who, but if a customer wants to track a complaint, you can go online, or again, you can call as well, whatever method you prefer, and you can request information on a specific case, which is what, what I did, just in researching this topic. So I called them up, and I said, "Here's some information that we've been hearing. Do you know about this?" And they said, "Yes, it is, it is what we believe is likely this incident, and we can give you whatever you want on that." And I said, "Okay, yes, please. If you don't mind, please give that information to me." That was technically a public records request on, on my part, and they, this was on Monday, and they, I got it first thing this morning. So it was, it was pretty, given that yesterday was a holiday, it was pretty quick. I'm going to go back because I think I've hyperlink this. Okay, anyway, so they sent me photos. In fact, that photo that I showed you earlier, this one right here, came from that public information request, along with probably a dozen more pictures of this site from different angles and from different activities that are occurring onsite, as well as a full-length report of what the staff directed the business to do. And then again, that, this page here that says, "Please don't ignore us, otherwise you're going to be in big trouble." So, so that's sort of the compliance process. Now, I know Mr. Duffy's concern was also what can, understand what citizens can do, but what can the City of Federal Way do if it wanted to get more involved? And since that time, staff has reached out to the Port of Tacoma to see if there's a way that we could get a better sense of, of activities that are occurring in the port or in the Tide Flats. And we have since been put on, and they are very accommodating, they have since put us on a regular communication that goes out to all interested parties of activities that are occurring in the port. Recently, we got an email informing us about some pile-driving activity that's scheduled and specified which hours it's going to occur. And so that helped us get, you know, if there's any activities that might generate either noise, which was that example, or other odor-causing activities, we can be more actively engaged in what might be, what turn into concerns for nearby residents. And so that's been a productive dialogue that the city has had with, with both the Clean Air Agency and the Port of Tacoma since Mr. Duffy's inquiry. Just, and then just for your information, the, the agency has other helpful, helpful information on their website. For example, this is a, this is a screen capture from today indicating forecasted air quality, and obviously, if you drove around this morning, there's still a lot of lingering smoke from lots of fireworks in, in the area. And then tomorrow, that's scheduled to go down for the west side of the Cascades, but the east side still suffers from other air pollution issues that they're dealing with. So with that, I believe that's it. Yep. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So Mr. Duffy's concern was that he thought that there is more pollution? Did, I don't know if you asked that.
I'm sure he'll speak in citizen involvement, but he, there was an increase in, in odor, and wanted to know what both citizens could do, but more specifically, what the city could do to become a more of an active player in what's going on with, with the Port of Tacoma and activities that might be generating these offensive odors to citizens.
So did the Port of Tacoma, did, was there an agreement in your discussion that there was more activities that were causing issues?
When I talked to the Clean Air Agency, they immediately pointed to this example, and I don't know if that's specifically the example that Mr. Duffy noted. He indicated to me that this has been an ongoing issue for, for many years. And so this, the example that they gave me was, was more, one of the more offensive violations that they've occurred, or that they've encountered in the last while. And so that's, that's the example that I bring to you today, where they got information from a citizen, went out, investigated, took action, and was able to resolve it without much further penalty.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you very much. I appreciate Mr. Duffy bringing this to our attention and your following up on it. As well, I additionally experienced some really caustic odors in driving by on Marine View Drive some time ago, and then did hear a report, rather informally, that it could be due to this asphalt plant. So it's fascinating to see this come full circle. But I also have had some individuals approach me with the suggestion that the city look into the work that the port is doing in developing a suburbia plan, and whether the City of Federal Way might want to explore the possibility of our, having a, some kind of a role with that process that they're developing. And I'd be interested in, in learning more about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council on the other, Councilmember Honda?
I think, is that the PSE plant?
No, it's not specifically the, the PSE project.
Okay. Brian, thank you very much for the follow-through. And actually, while, actually, while we've got you close, Mr. Duffy has signed up for public comment. I'm going to take Mr. Duffy's public comment out of order, you know, out of, out of the regular order here. While we're talking about this, while this is all fresh in our minds, Mr. Duffy, if you could approach, and we'll do the three-minute comment right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Chuck Duffy. Live over in the Brigadoon, Twin Lakes area. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for hearing me tonight. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Davis. I do appreciate his involvement in the research that he's done. The issue for me is larger than just one incident. This has been going on for years. And what I noticed, we moved here in 1980, the industrialization of the Tide Flats was starting to disappear. We are now back into a re-industrialization of that Tide Flat, where we've seen the methanol plant, the liquefaction of the natural gas, et cetera. The challenge that I see for the City of Federal Way is those byproducts that are created during that process that drift over the county line into the City of Federal Way. The Port of Tacoma has elected representatives there, but they're all from Pierce County. We have very little impact on it, which is why I brought up the question at Decatur, and it goes beyond a single incident. This is, like I said, going on for years. I used to work in Olympia. I would come up to 509, and the hydrocarbon odors in that area, particularly by that refinery at the bottom of the hill, are very similar to the ones I smell at my house four and a half miles away. I would notice it in the mornings, et cetera. I've been in contact with Puget Sound Clean Air, I don't know how many times over the years, and the challenge is, you never get any feedback. So I appreciate the work you've done, Brian, with identifying the, doing it under a public records request. And as someone who's worked for both city and state government, I'm very familiar with public records requests. So I will certainly pursue that. But what I would ask the council is that the focus, the city puts some focus on what's going on down there, because candidly, we are becoming, as I mentioned to Councilmember DuKlo, kind of the odor armpit of the Tacoma Tide Flats. And, you know, we have, as a city, and as a citizen within the city, worked very hard to improve the image of this city. This kind of activity by the Port of Tacoma without really any functional input or concern on the part of Federal Way, to me, is a tremendous mistake. And we saw it with the methanol plant. I believe we're going to see a whole lot more, and it was, Deputy Mayor, it was very nice to hear your comments, whoops, time's almost up, very nice to hear your comments with regards to the area subplans, et cetera. So that's something I'll take a look at as well. But thank you for your time. Those are my concerns. It's not an immediate event. Like I said, I've probably filed, I don't know, 20, 30 events, and it's not, for every one that I've filed, there's probably 10 more. And I've had neighbors approach me because I somehow wound up on the front page of the Federal Way Mirror at the Decatur event, and they all said, "Wow, what were you doing there?" And then I explained it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And we've got a, a planning commissioner now, Mr. Lawson Bronson, who, who attends meetings down there regularly, keeps me myself informed, and also the deputy mayor. So, and I've asked our community development staff to be, to be watching about what's going down there, going on down there. I do believe, and for folks watching at home and in the audience here, it was about one week after this council took, took step with the moratorium on the methanol plant, that the direction of that was, essentially, that whole process was halted. And I think our community had a major impact in that. So it took the council, this, this neighboring community to, to step up. And so I think we've got to keep our eye on this ball, and we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And thank you, Brian, for following up. Councilmember DuKlo?
I was just going to say, we need to keep a big eye on this, and we need to have regular updates on what's going on, and we might need to try, we might need to try to take some action like we did before.
That's right.
On the methanol.
Will do.
Because that all drifts uphill.
Yep.
And, and the port has changed an awful lot since I first moved out here. And it's, it's growing, and it's putting in all kinds of things. The truck traffic is terrible. And I think, I think we really need to be careful what's going on, because that will affect our city, and we don't need that kind of effect here.
Well, just as I, you know, it was Lawson Bronson at a meeting about this that had asked the question several times, "Have you talked to the mayor of Tacoma?" When I did speak to the mayor of Tacoma about the methanol plant, I explained that I believe a greater proportion of the City of Federal Way's population is actually closer to the Tide Flats than their population base is to the Tide Flats. And with the prevailing winds, oftentimes, you know, going on a northern area, in a northern direction, it puts our population area at risk. And so, you know, our eyes on this ball, but we'll give regular updates and... And so, you know, our eyes on this ball, but we'll give regular updates, and Brian and we'll talk about that. Chuck, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and resume back to mayor's emerging issues just real quickly. We had, as we mentioned before, the Miles from Esso event. That's mesothelioma, $100,000 over the course of the past six years. I'd really like to thank the entire community center staff and park staff, and it was just a great event. I've never seen that many people there for that event. It was really, John, what do you think about 300 people?
There was about 300 runners, yeah, exactly, sir.
It was great. And I loved the little dash with the kids at the very beginning, and it's just absolutely, it's just a great event. And so it was good. Councilmember Honda was there as well, and it was a good, it was good. Okay, Northlake Improvement Club, Fourth of July Parade, one of the great traditions in our community. And boy, it just feels like just a little town over there, and really a great community. There was a great event, a great old-fashioned parade through that area, and then a lunch over at the Improvement Club there afterwards. And it was fun to see the cars and people and the floats, and just a great community tradition. Okay, and we had some regional meetings. I represented the city at the SCORE, our regional jail meeting last Wednesday. Then that same day, off to the Sound Cities Board Association Board of Directors meeting on 6/28. And we had a tabletop exercise here the very next day for the Greater Federal Way Emergency Operations Group that is going back to Emmitsburg, Maryland on the last week of August to prepare for disaster training. And I believe there's about 75 people from the Greater Federal Way EOC that are going to that, and we had one of our major trainings for that just last week. Okay, that's the report that I have. Mr. Duffy's already testified. I've got two additional pink sheets. And the first is Dana Holloway, and then Betty Taylor.
This is easy. Just want to go on record one more time. I don't know how many times I spoke about this now. Agenda item 8A in favor of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, right to the point. Betty Taylor.
Good evening, council members, mayor, citizens. I don't know if I need a drum roll or something, but I would like to talk to you about National Night Out, which we all know is August 1st. And we all know that different cities celebrate Night Out in their own way. And I know the City of Federal Way is going to celebrate in their own way, too, with different agencies going to different events around the city. And I would like to oppose the invitation to the city, to the citizens, to come out to Night Out at the new Town Square Park. Okay. Yay! So I'm excited. I am so excited about that. Mayor Farrell, you're greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. And the city council, too. But we would like to thank every, there's key people that are involved in the planning of this event, myself, Susan Honda, and also Joe Bowman with Integrity Life. So we're expecting to have food and games, and we just want to have a good time. We want to basically reach those neighbors that are hard to reach, mainly right by the Town Square Park. We have the senior citizen apartments, and we have like the Koreans. So we want to reach those Koreans and see if we can bring them out, not just them, but we want to target like other people, like in the neighborhood, those people that maybe may not have Night Out, people that are looking for something to do with their neighbors. This is a night where we want to know our neighbors. We want to get familiar with each other and find out how we could be supportive of each other also. Flyers will be coming later and stuff, and more information will be coming later on this event. We're just like touching it right now, just going to put it out there so ones can know that this will be happening. We plan on being there from 4:00 to 8:00, 8:00 PM. So that's like a four-hour period, and so there's going to be plenty of stuff to do during those times, and thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, that's the last pink sheet that I have. Is there anybody else who'd like to talk? Oh, very good.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Diana Noble Gulliford, President, Historical Society of Federal Way. I just want to thank you very much, supporting the, making the Historic Preservation Ordinance happen and part of Federal Way's way of planning for preserving our past. It gives private property owners and public property owners an opportunity to preserve the very important historic buildings that we have in Federal Way. Some people in the public say Federal Way doesn't have any history, but hopefully, in time and over time, that will change. But I wanted to give you my sincere thanks on the efforts and the wonderful job that staff has done to bring this forth. On another matter is Tacoma Tide Flats. And I can tell you from my personal experience that we do and have been inundated with a lot of pollution over the years in Federal Way that comes from the tide flats. Some of it, the Port of Tacoma has removed, but there's also a craft paper mill down there. And I've read reports where a lot of the pollution ends up in Mount Rainier. There's also Schnitzer Steel when they have fires down there. So I'm pleased to see that the city is taking an interest in monitoring this. And also the pile driving, that's something that almost all of the southwest part of Federal Way hears when they start. Because those piles, they're not wood, they're steel. And you see these comments all over the internet, what is that noise? So something needs to be done about it because it's keeping people awake at night, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for your work in the Historical Society. Okay, that being the last pink sheet, we've got the consent agenda. These items have gone through the committee process and can be voted on all at once unless I'll read the items, and then we'll see if an individual council member would wish to pull an item for individual consideration or separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the June 20th, 2017 regular meeting. Item B, monthly financial report for May 2017. Item C, vouchers, May 2017. Item D, remodeling police crime scene van. Item E, resolution authorizing the mayor or designated to enter into goods and service agreement for up to $50,000 per contract for events at the Performing Arts and Event Center. And item F, Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership DBA or Doing Business As Verizon Wireless Site Lease Agreement. Council, are there any of those items that we'd want for separate consideration? Councilmember Honda?
Item E, I had a question after the committee meeting. I'd like to pull that to ask a question.
Okay, so, well, item E is pulled for separate consideration. Anyone else? Okay, Deputy Mayor Burridge, do you have a motion with respect to items A, B, C, D, and F?
Yes, I do. I move approval of items A, B, C, D, and F on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes. All right, those matters are passed. All right, item E. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. My question was, the agreement that we already have with the groups that were announced in the PAC schedule for the first year, have they already gone through this process?
Most of them have. No? Let's ask Theresa.
Teresa? Can you answer from there?
Yes. So, no, they have not gone into contract. We've been waiting for this. And so they've had a deal memo signed, which is traditional, we make an agreement that we're going to pay them, and they're going to come on a certain date, and we have authorization from them to go ahead and announce them as part of the season.
Okay, thanks. That was my question. I was wondering how we got those groups if we hadn't done this yet.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve that item?
Yes, I move that we approve item E on the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any further consideration or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes. A public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. This is item A, resolution regarding the surplus of 1.86 acre parcel of property to be created between the Performing Arts and Event Center property and the former Target Store property for hotel use. First, we'll have a staff report from Ryan Call, our city attorney, and then we'll open it up for citizen comment, and then we'll have council discussion and possible action. All right, Mr. Call.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. I actually have two items on for tonight. One is a public hearing where we're going to discuss surplusing the proposed 1.86 acre parcel that will be a hotel pad to be sold. And then on council business, there is an item for action approving the purchase and sale agreement that has been negotiated by the staff to effect that sale. There's only one staff report. I'm going to cover most of the meat of everything during the public hearing, so I'd encourage questions during that presentation. So first, we're starting with an overview. We have been negotiating this for quite a while, more than a year, year and a half. Tim, our economic development director, Adey, are, were the two main points. Legal was in support as well. At the end of that negotiation, we've come up with what was called a purchase and sale agreement, which is, we'll explain a little more later on, but basically, that is the mechanism where we come to agreement on all of the major terms of the negotiation. And I'm going to go into more detail about what's in that in a moment. Like I said, we're planning to sell a 1.86 acre parcel of property. It's called the property in the purchase and sale agreement and most of the supporting documents. So that is a term of art. If you see a capital P, property in the documents, that's specifically referring to that legal description. And that new piece of property with a capital P is actually going to be created from a little bit of the PAC, current PAC parcel, and a little bit of the Town Center III or the former Target property. And we're going to outline exactly the boundaries of that as well. The sale is with a corporation out of California called Atone Salinas Incorporated. They are the financial partner of Mr. Proffman, Cadius, Cadius Partners, who is the group that we did most of the negotiation with. Our contract is with Atone Salinas partly to facilitate a tax property swap, a 1031 federal tax swap that they are trying to basically take advantage of, and as a principal investor, they can. So some of this agreement is structured to facilitate their tax needs. So tonight, we're going to go through the three last steps of what we need to sell this property. The first is, we must hold a public hearing to consider whether or not to surplus the property. That's what we're going to do right now. The second is to decide whether or not to pass the resolution that does that. And then, in order for the purchase and sale agreement to be effective, council must approve So a little bit more background, in December of 2014, the city purchased a 7.84 acre piece of property. We call it the TC3 or Town Center III property. We purchased it for $8.2 million, and that adds up to about $25.2 per square foot. In 2015, we asked for requests for proposals to develop a hotel on the TC3 property. We received a proposal on May 4, 2016, for an upper mid-scale hotel on a portion of the site from Cadius Partners, and that's who we've been negotiating with this whole We've been negotiating this entire time, as we've stated before, and as part of that preparation and part of the negotiations, we established that a fair market value for this property is $27 per square foot, which is what we're proposing to sell the property for at this time. So the surplus property process is something that's required by local resolution. I believe when this resolution was passed, there was a state law that we were trying to conform with that required us to surplus all property by resolution before we did it. There's some case law that says it's not required anymore, but we still have it on the books locally, so we are complying with our local law. It requires that we hold a public hearing for any property over $5,000. We must sell it at fair market value. We must provide proper notice of the public hearing, and we must hold a public comment period. And that's what we're doing tonight. We properly noticed this hearing. This is pretty much the last chance we have in order to make the closing date that our partners need of August 1. There's a resolution in your packet, and I'm going to go through the highlights of it, but it's really short and to the point. Basically, it says that the property is no longer necessary for a public purpose. In this case, the public purpose was, we specifically purchased this property in order to sell it to someone and control development of the property commercially. So this was the purpose of this purchase originally. And then the resolution declares the property surplus. The purchase and sale agreement is the contract that was negotiated and signed by the mayor. It's between the buyer and the seller. We are the seller. Sets a final sale price and lays out all of the contingencies and terms of the property sale, and I'm going to go into detail of what those are later. Part of entering into the purchase and sale agreement is that the buyer must put down earnest money, and they have done that. They have deposited $100,000 with the escrow agent. So here's some more details about the purchase and sale agreement. As I said before, it's with a company called Atone Salinas Incorporated. I've underlined it there, I wanted to make it very clear, that though the mayor signed this agreement, one of the contingencies and requirements of the agreement is that council must approve the agreement before it can be finalized. So if council declines to approve this agreement, then we would return the earnest money, and that would be the end of the agreement. It is to sell a 1.86 acre parcel, and the total price that we expect to get for this parcel is $2,187,756. That comes out to $27 per square foot. The plan, as we've been told for the buyer, is to form a new LLC with Cadius Partners, who's the main design and construction firm, and that new entity will actually do construction of the hotel, and it sounds like they're going to operate the hotel as well. Like I said, they've already deposited $100,000 in escrow, so the balance of that $2,877,756 would be paid at closing in order to affect the deal. Closing is scheduled for August 1st. A little bit about Atone Salinas, there's not that much information. Basically, it's a third-generation family-owned real estate company in Salinas, California. They have developed hotels in the past, and maybe Tim can speak to this a little more. They are, it sounds like they're one of the principal, if not the principal, source of funds for Cadius Partner. That said, Cadius Partners will continue to be the main entity for design and construction of the project. So going into a little bit about what we are doing to the property in order to facilitate the sale, we had to adjust the lot lines for both the PAC property and the TC3 property because this property is kind of in the middle of those two, and it kind of takes up, it does take up sections of both. The breakdown of that 1.8 acre lot is 81,028 square feet, and $68,000 and change will come from the TC3 site, and $12,000 and change will come from the PAC site. We've already approved a boundary line adjustment through the Community Development Department to adjust the PAC property right now. So currently, I'll show you a picture of it. The PAC property is a little bit larger than it is right now. So let me go through the pictures. I think it's easier to explain by looking at the maps. This is the original configuration. The PAC site or the old Toys R Us site is the blue, TC3 is the Target site, and that was the boundary. A few months back, we dedicated this red section for the A few months back, we dedicated this red section for the grand staircase. So that has been taken off and sold as right-of-way to the city, and that is now a separate parcel. And this is the current state of the property. We've expanded the lot line of the PAC property to intrude into the TC3 property as illustrated here. And then the final action that we need to complete before August 1 is to do a binding site plan, which will carve out the 1.86 acre parcel and create this lot. And this is the lot as we intend to sell it. And there's all three, all four of them together. That's how they will end up. And that's just restating, basically, we're taking 68,000 square feet from the TC3 parcel and 12,000 from the PAC parcel. Some of the other terms of the purchase and sale agreement, we have the total price. In addition to the dollar amount, the money that we're getting, there are restrictive covenants that will be filed in favor of the city to control uses and development of the property. And it also includes a concession from the buyer to leave one of the main encumbrances that's on the property, which is the operation and easement agreement that is currently on the property. They are going to be responsible for clearing that easement in order to sell the hotel on their piece of property. In addition to that, the buyer will pay us for staff time. We had to work overtime and put an emphasis on this that we might not have otherwise have done to bump it up in the queue to get, for planning purposes. And that, that will cost us extra money, so they're going to compensate us for that. And then there are contingencies in the contract for if they fail to begin construction on the timeline as outlined in the contract, and we'll go into more detail on those in a second. Here's a list of the highlights, the main restrictions and the covenants that will be on the property. They must design and construct, construct the hotel in a way that harmonizes with the PAC. That's both materials and style must be harmonious with the PAC. And that's described a little bit more in exhibit, I believe, C of the contract, if you want to get more details. Basically, it's, there's a picture, and then materials are described. The hotel must be what's called an upscale or higher-tier hotel. We have had questions about what the difference between upscale and premium is, and Tim can probably explain that a little bit. But there are examples in the contract of the kind of facility that we anticipate. And the four named examples are those four: Hilton Garden Inn, Hilton DoubleTree, Hyatt Place or Hyatt House. So those are, I guess I would term them kind of middling-level hotels. They're not four-star hotels, but they're, they're not motel sex. The hotel must have amenities. It must have a restaurant with a lounge. There must be meeting rooms, and it must have a fitness center during the entire time that the hotel exists on the property. They are agreeing to maintain pedestrian connectivity between the two sites and also between the TC3 site and the PAC site, so that people can walk freely. There's a turnaround that will be described a little bit more. But basically, in order to have enough room to turn a fire truck around or the drop-off point in front of the PAC, part of that will intrude onto the hotel property. So we're going to share one kind of turnaround, and part of that will be on the PAC property and part will be on the new hotel property. Because part of our purchase of the TC3 property was financed through CDBG funds or the PAC property. Both, both. There must be low-income job creation documented for the first three years that the hotel operates, and they've agreed to document that and report it out to us. And then, like I said, there's a construction schedule. So here's the demonstrative picture that's in the contract that kind of lays out the style that we're looking for. It's more of a contemporary style versus a, I don't know, some other style. Here's the turnaround that we're talking about. So if you look at this L shape that's here, the right, the rightmost border there, that is the PAC property or the hotel property border. As you can see, the turnaround will intrude into the hotel property by whatever, you know, 20 feet or so. So they must maintain that, and they must maintain that during construction as well because the PAC will be open this whole time. So as far as timeline goes, they must begin construction before June 1 of 2018 to avoid penalties. If they don't make that deadline, there's a $25,000 per week penalty for each week of delay. If we don't want, if we've lost confidence or we don't believe that they are going to continue on the property or continue building, we may purchase the property back as an option. We're not required to purchase it back, but it is an option. We can also agree to modify the construction schedule if we think that that's, that suits our purposes better. The hotel is required to open and be operating by December 1 of 2019. And similarly, if they do not make that deadline, there is a $25,000 per week penalty for missing that deadline. They've agreed to limit construction activities to Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. The thought behind that is we don't want construction interfering with performances at the PAC. And most of those will be happening, the larger events will be happening at night and on the weekend. And then they've also agreed to pay any dust cleanup that they might need, that might be caused by their construction to the PAC. The buyer is required to secure a hotel brand within 60 days of mutual acceptance, so that clock is ticking. I believe we're like 19 days in or 18 days in. The brand must be approved by the city. If we come back with one of those four brands that are named in the contract, those would all be acceptable. If they're not one of those four, we'd have to basically review it and approve it if it's acceptable. And like I said before, the buyer must take the property subject to the operations and easement agreement that currently encumbers the property. Those are all of the main points. I'd be happy to answer any questions during this.
Council, any questions? Council Marisowski?
You saw me pushing my button.
That's right.
So, yeah, thanks, Ryan, for the presentation. You know, to me, this is a really big deal for, for the city. The sale of this property really is the beginning of fulfilling the vision that we established for the Town Center quite some time ago. So this is pretty exciting to me. I think I've asked most of my questions of you and Marwan earlier, but I do have a couple of quick things. Could you talk about the specifications for parking? And how the parking with this relates against the PAC? Or maybe Brian or somebody could address that.
That is a question that was prevalent throughout our discussions in this process. And so we have worked with the Performing Arts Center staff and as well as Marwan's staff in a proposal that accommodates for parking both for the PAC and for this proposed buyer that involves the PAC property, obviously, and this property and as well as the TC3, what is now the TC3 property, until some other accommodations can be made. There also is some other parking that the, that we've looked at off-site as well in the surrounding area that would be part of this. But as of right now, we are including TC3 for much of the parking until other accommodations can be made.
And if I could clarify just one point, the hotel, it will be responsible for its own parking per the code entirely. The issue is that currently, the TC3 has 80 spots that benefit the PAC. This deal will, we'll have to file a release of that as to the hotel property. So our 80 spots can't come out of the hotel property's parking. And similarly, they have to make, they have to comply with the code themselves for their own parking. So we're talking about the extra 80 spots for the PAC that, right now, it'll be on the TC3 property for a while, but we'll need to make more long-term arrangements if we're going to sell the rest of the TC3 property.
Okay, so by our code, then, we'll have the requisite number of parking spaces for hotel guests exclusive, not spilling over with the, with the PAC property?
We've made no special agreement that talks about any of the zoning requirements, so they're required to comply with the zoning.
Okay, as it is. And then just one other question. I see there's some exclus, exclusions here, restrictions and covenants. And the very last two, it talks about no more than three retail installations or fast food restaurants. But we do allow for a full-service restaurant in the facility itself.
That's actually required.
It's required. Okay, great. Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right, Councilmember Hunden, then Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So when I look up the company, Atone Salinas, it looks like they're a rendering company down in Salinas, California. That's the only thing I could find on the internet about them?
I'm sure a group of attorneys will not appreciate a rendering company, but that's what they are. They are attorneys, and they are investors in hotels that Cadius Partners builds. And so that's what they do. And they have hotels throughout California, Oregon, and now in Washington. And they're typically Hilton brands, although they're open franchises to Hyatt and also to Sheraton.
So when I, when I met with Ryan earlier tonight, I talked about upscale because in this contract, it says this will be an upscale hotel. And the Hyatt, for their upscale hotels, they are the Hyatt Regency and Hyatt Grand.
Okay, so let's go through that for a moment. There are multiple levels of scales as identified by the International Hotel Association. And within the context of that, where our report identified where we had a demand for was for a mid to upper-scale hotel by hospitality evaluation services. So before we launched off into the RFP, we wanted to know two things. One, what was the demand for hotel rooms in federal way? And two, what was the scale that we could, we could project that we could get? Now, what you just referred to, Councilmember, is an upper, upper, upper-scale hotel. So when you look at those that were identified, that is mid to upper-scale hotel range for those brands. If you went to upper, upper-scale, you would then subsequently be looking at, as you just identified, a Hyatt Regency or a Hyatt Grand. You would be looking at a Hilton, which would be its own flagship Hilton product, and also a Sheraton or a Marriott and its own flag. So, and then when you go beyond that, then you go to premium and, or luxury event. And those are like the Four Seasons and beyond, Ritz-Carlton.
Okay. I'd like to talk about the jobs that the hotel is going to be required to. So when we took the Section 108 loan, part of that was we agreed to provide jobs for 20 years. So with this, it seems like we're almost transferring our responsibility now to the hotel to provide the jobs. It's, it's how I'm reading that. But I, that can't possibly be right because we were the ones who signed the contract for the Section 108 loan. How many jobs would we expect out of the hotel, and how many jobs would, that we then need to be finding?
So we are responsible for providing those jobs per our agreement with the federal government. And how we accomplish that is to contractually require the buyer to live up to that expectation as to that property. We still have the same requirement on the rest of the property. So as to the details of what they must be, there aren't specific numbers. It's 51% of positions must be low-to-moderate income residents of the city, and then low income and moderate income are defined. So it's actually paragraph five of exhibit C4, or exhibit C. So it's page four of exhibit C, paragraph five. So that, that's what they've agreed to report out to us. So basically, it's 80% of the area median income at 51% of the positions, which for a hotel operation, I don't think is terribly difficult.
Okay. Do we know how many employees they might hire generally?
35 is what Tim's mouthing at me.
Okay. And can we talk about the 1031 tax exchange? Could you explain that a little bit more to me, please?
As much as I can. I'm not a, I'm not a tax attorney. I'm not part of that deal. But in general terms, you, when you sell a piece of property in order to avoid the tax implications of that, if you reinvest it in a eligible property within a certain time period, you don't have to pay taxes at that other rate. So I believe they had 180 days to identify this property as the property that they're basically transferring their basis in to, so that they don't have to pay capital gains.
So what is the risk to us as a city by helping facilitate this for them?
No risk at all.
Have we done this before when we've purchased property?
No, we have not. It's very common in the real estate world, but we transfer properties so.
If I may, in the properties that I did through the low-income housing thing, we had the same, the same issue. There's no risk. There really isn't because they're putting their money into it, and they're investing in things. And it's really a very, very safe thing, and it's a way for them to, to get a tax break.
Well, it has to be reported to the IRS.
Well, yeah, it is all reported.
That's the whole purpose this is.
Yeah, so it's, and there's all kinds of written agreements and contracts. And it benefits both parties, so there's no reason for them not to fulfill.
How does it benefit the city?
It doesn't. I mean, we, we get a sale, basically. So the only real implication in this deal, the 1031, is that it's listed and that the property is identified in the, in the contract, and then the timing. We have to close this within the 180 days to make their timeline, which is why we've pushed so quickly to, to close the deal by August 1.
Okay. That's it for now.
All right, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, you know, environmental standards and apprentices, apprenticeship opportunities have been really important to me and, and I'm sure others on my, on the dais. Has there been any conversation or is there any plans for Cadius Partners or Atone Salinas to utilize apprentices for this development? And are there any environmental standards that are part of this hotel? Or am I too early to talk about?
Well, environmental standards, they have to comply with the law. So there won't be any special enhanced environmental standards, if that's what you're talking about. But they have to, just like any other builder in federal way, comply with, with the law. So as to apprenticeships, we, so as we're negotiating this, there's a million things that we want. How intrusive or how demanding we try to be as a seller, there's, there's give and take there. You can only go so far before you lose the buyer. And so we've limited basically our discussion to the form of the hotel and how it will interact with the PAC. We have not discussed how they plan to build it.
Is it too late to discuss? I imagine it's too late to.
It is, in fact, too late to discuss it.
Anyone else before I call in Councilmember Hunden again? If you guys have any chance to hit. Councilmember Hunden?
Thank you. The grand staircase, is the hotel putting in money for that?
I don't, I do not believe so. Marwan?
The hotelier will be required to pay impact fee to the transportation system. The money from the impact fee will go toward building the staircase. But they are not putting their own money into the staircase at this time.
At one point, were they going to do that?
Initially, at the start of the project, yes, there was a discussion for them to dedicate the property. This will be one of the means of paying toward the staircase. And also contribute some fund toward the staircase. That fund was tied to the impact fee, which means that they will pay the money upfront for the building of the staircase, but the city will not charge them the impact fee for transportation system. Toward the end, the negotiation took a different turn where we decided to go ahead and proceed with building the staircase because we were able to get some grant funding to start the staircase, and we could not wait till we closed this particular deal. So at the present time, there is no contribution from the hotelier toward the staircase other than when they come in for a building permit, they'll be required to. than when they come in for a building permit, they'll be required to pay transportation impact fee and that money could be utilized for that purpose.
Okay, thanks. And then the, my last statement is, I'm certainly glad that we're getting a hotel. Um, but today at Chamber, I was answering some questions from a couple of people who've been involved, who wanted the Performing Arts Center here for a long time. And, and one of the consultants that we worked with early on in developing the, the concept for the PAC, they talked about a boutique hotel. And so a couple of these folks I talked to today were expecting a boutique upscale hotel. And that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking. It's just because that was the vision that some people still have about what we were, what we thought was going to happen and what's happening. So I just wanted to clear that up. But I, I'm happy we're getting a hotel. Um, it is what it is and I, I think it's, it's great.
If I may add, um, yes, there was discussion. Some people wanted a boutique hotel, but I don't think any of us ever agreed to that. I think we wanted to keep it wide open as to what we were gonna look at. And I think we have a good thing coming in here and, um, and I think that's what we go with. But no one ever said, yes, that's the kind of hotel we want.
Well, I think most importantly, um, this is, the city's not building the hotel. This is a market position. This is a, this is based on what the market yields.
I know. I just wanna make it clear that we never made a commitment to do a boutique hotel.
That's right. That's right.
I, I don't-
We're not, I'm sorry. We're not building the hotel. We put it out for bid. We, we put this out. We, we opened it up to the public. This is what came back and this is the negotiation. It's not up to us to build a boutique hotel. If the market doesn't bear that out, we can't force that to occur. But Councilmember Hunden?
Thank you. I don't disagree with that. I'm just telling you why I'm asking the questions. Because the people involved early, early on in getting the PAC here had the expectation that this is what was gonna happen. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Again, I'm gonna disagree a little bit. They, that's what they had in mind for it, but we never, ever committed to that.
No. No. Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Moore, did you have a, did you have a question? Okay. Okay. Um, is there any citizen comment? Thank you, Ryan. Any citizen comment about this? All right, council, any other further discussion? All right, Deputy Mayor Burbridge, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to close the public hearings.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any, any, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the, uh, uh, motion to close is, has been approved. Now moving on, item seven, council business. Proposed-
Mr. Mayor, there's actually one more motion.
Oh, motion by the deputy mayor.
Okay.
Please proceed.
I move approval of the resolution declaring the property to, as described, to be surplus.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, the property's surplus. Item seven, council business. Proposed purchase and sale agreement with Atone Salinas Incorporated for the sale of a 1.86 acre parcel of property to be created between the Performing Arts and Events Center property and the former Target Store property for hotel use. There is no additional staff report. Um, Deputy Mayor Burbridge, do you have a motion?
I do.
I move approval of the purchase and sale agreement, addendum, and the sale of the property, and to authorize the mayor to execute all documents related to the same.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
One other question?
Uh, Councilmember Hunden.
So the portion of the funds that will come from this small slice of PAC property will go to the PAC funding and the rest of the money will go to pay off TC3?
That's my understanding. Dave, maybe Chase could answer that question, but my understanding is that there'll be a prorata dispersal of those funds, depending on which property we pulled from.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Is that correct? Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, uh, discussions, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right, item B, added item, the Performing Arts and Events Center authorized purchase of staged draperies for the Performing Arts and Events Center. First, a staff report from Theresa Yvonne, Executive Director of the PAC. Theresa?
Good evening, council, deputy mayor, um, mayor. So I'm before you again, um, just to give a little bit of brief history. This went to FedRAC in May and then you guys, we brought it back to council on, council approved on June 6th for the award of the draperies to the lowest bidder. The lowest bidder has since become, um, non-responsive. Um, they were ordered the contract and they are unwilling to purchase a state business license. So we moved to the second lowest bidder, um, and they have been unresponsive. We spent a week trying to call them and get emails from them. So we are at the third bidder, which is PNTA, and I actually had a, a conversation with the owner of the company on Monday, Richard, and he's, um, very responsive. They were also the same company out of Seattle that got our lighting bid. So they're very responsive and willing to, um, put the draperies together. I wanted to bring this back in front of you though, because from the lowest bid to PNTA is a $17,000 differential. So I wanted to make sure that you guys are, um, aware of that. And then I also, um, have to confess, I have a mistake on the, off the award of the bid, 'cause I put in $60,222.95. And if you look on your sheet, that doesn't include the tax. So that's my mistake. So it's actually with, including the tax of $6,022.30. The sub, the total for the, uh, draperies is $66,245.25. I wanted to bring-
Let me make sure I got that right. $66,245.25?
You look on your, on your back on the cheat sheet, it's right. And then when I put the agenda bill, I accidentally wrote down just the price of the draperies and did not include the tax. So it's $66,000, what's in bold there on your, um, sub, company three, in the third column, $66,245.25. It includes the tax.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I got the motion correct.
I gotcha. I appreciate that. And my apologies. Any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Hunden?
Thank you. Um, at the last FedRAC meeting, we talked about the, the budget for this kinda stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So this would then leave us with, how much left in the?
There's still some money. It'll leave us with about, um, $40,000 to $44,000, but $20,000 of that is contingency for the orchestra shell. Um, and I believe that we, I'm looking over at EJ's and back there, that we're gonna come in on, um, target with the orchestra shell. It's installing next week and then that money will be freed up.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Councilmember DuKlo?
Yes, I move to forward the staged draperies contract to Pacific Northwest Cedar Associations in the amount of $66,245.25 and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any questions or, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Theresa, you got some new drapes.
Thank you so much.
All right. Um, all right, ordinances, second reading. Council Bill 726, adding new chapter to 19.285 to Federal Way Historical, excuse me, Federal Way Revised Code for Historical Preservation. With the city clerk, please read the ordinance title.
Council Bill 726, adding new chapter 19.285 to Federal Way Revised Code for Historic Preservation. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington relating to the protection and preservation of landmarks and adding new chapter 19.285 to the Federal Way Revised Code.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Zelski?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second, second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Council reports, Councilmember DuKlo?
I have no report, but other than to say that I did have, undergo some medical things recently and I'm gonna have to leave now.
All right, thank you. Good night.
The pain is, the pain is so-
Very good. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also wanna give my shout out to, um, oh, I don't see John Hutton here. Uh, but I wanted to thank the, the park staff for their hospitality, their customer service, and, uh, their spirit. Um, I, I really appreciated. They were extremely helpful and, and extremely friendly and I, I appreciated having the chance to meet, uh, and work with them. Um, you know, I have to say that the Fourth of July is one of my favorite holidays with, uh, it's my favorite because I love celebrating here in Federal Way because I think we are a city that celebrates it the right way and, and quite frankly, the only way. Uh, we all come as one community. Uh, we all have different backgrounds. We come and celebrate the Independence Day of America and, uh, it's amazing how many stories we have out here in Federal Way as we are incredibly diverse, uh, community. And I'm just grateful that, uh, we really come together, uh, in, in celebrating this, uh, great holiday. Um, with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I know that my colleagues would be shocked, absolutely shocked, that I will end my report and what appears to be a less than seven-minute report. Thank you.
Alert the media. Councilmember Copeng?
I too wanted to, uh, pass on my thanks to the, uh, staff, Police Department, uh, and Parks and Recreation for their great work yesterday. Um, I think that it was really a phenomenal event. Echo, uh, Councilmember Moore's comments. Uh, we are a melting pot in Federal Way and we all play well together. Uh, it was really a fun night. The music was outstanding. Um, I think the activities were, were well-done. And, uh, I mean, the Arts Commission did a fantastic job in, in their tent and, uh, I just, the vendors were all wonderful. So I think in the end, we really had a great evening. And, uh, again to cap it off with a great firework show. Mr. Mayor, um, music was, uh, well, well-chosen.
Thank you.
A lot of rave reviews. Um, I had a chance to go to the, uh, Association of Washington, Washington Cities Conference and, uh, really appreciated the, the good work of that organization and, uh, really supporting, uh, city officials and, uh, electeds. And, uh, the MRSC, um, also was a part of that. And again, they're, they're invaluable. Uh, just saw that they were fully funded, which is something that's, they're, they're a resource for city officials and do a great job. And was very, very, I was very happy to see them getting fully funded, uh, by the state legislature when they passed the budget. So I know we're still in process there, but again, that's promising and, uh, a lot of good things ahead this year. Um, with the PAC opening, I purchased, uh, my tickets for the gala. Looking forward to a, a great show. Uh, and with that, I'll conclude my report.
All right, Councilmember Hunden?
Thank you. Friday night, I attended the Desma Soccer Club's auction. They are a group of Russian immigrants who settled here in Federal Way in, um, the year 1999. And they took, took 20 young soccer players over to Russia. They're there now. They're there for two weeks and they're going to language schools. They're going to play soccer games. They're going to, um, some orphanages to, to do some service. But what's really awesome about the Desma Soccer Club is when they came here, I met with them when they first, um, wanted to put on a, a cultural exchange and they wanted to play soccer because everyone around the world plays soccer. And this is the 10th year. It has grown really, really big. So big that Sahali Park is overcome with how many people show up. And they've added things throughout the years. It is probably, uh, one of the biggest events we have in Federal Way that is not sponsored and run by the city. So this is their 10th year anniversary. Um, they're in Russia and they're ac- actually talking about the City of Federal Way because they love Federal Way. They love the things that they, Federal Way represents and what they can do in Federal Way. And so they're talking about how great we are as a city. I would like to encourage people to attend their 10th year anniversary event, which is August 18th, 19th, and 20th. And it's always, it's always really fun to go there and you, you get to see a lot of great soccer players. They're playing baseball. They're doing some other things and, um, it's just a really good weekend. I attended the AWC conference too and I carried our city flag in, which is great. I've been to several of the conferences and we've never, well, since I've been going, we haven't had our flag there. So that was fun to carry our flag in with the other cities. I learned a lot. I met a lot of new people and, um, I'd like to thank Lydia for driving. That was awesome. Um, Councilmember Martin Moore went and, um, Councilmember Copeng went. I, I think we all gained a lot of information from that. I'm very excited that we have passed a historic preservation ordinance and I can't wait to see what the first project comes to us. Who, who wants to get something under that to be our first project. And the Kiwanis Salmon Bake is July 28th at Steel Lake Park. There are three Kiwanis up here and you can buy tickets from any of us, um, Mayor Farrell and Councilmember Copeng. We encourage you to come. Tickets are $20 or $23 at, uh, the door. And that's, uh, July 28th, rain or shine, Steel Lake Park from 4 to 8. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember, Councilmember Zelski?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Farrell. I was able to be at the quarterly Korean meeting that was, uh, excuse me, that took place here on the 22nd of June. And it was just really neat to be with, with the group there that night and, uh, see the updates presented by our staff, uh, to the community. But what was really neat, uh, two things. First of all, was to see Mike Park in action, uh, former Mayor Park. Uh, he just is the coordinator of the activities. It seems like he has all the answers to all the questions and, uh, just does a really great job guiding and leading the discussion and, and keeping the Korean community informed, um, just of all the things going on in the city. And second of all, that night, about a dozen students were recognized for volunteer hours that they perform in the community. And some of them were over 200 hours and it was just amazing to see that. And, uh, and so the community, uh, gave them different recognition and some rewards for all the work that they put in. So again, thanks to, uh, to Mike and the entire Korean community for all that they do. Secondly, on the 18th of July is the Boys and Girls Club fundraising breakfast. And that will go on at seven, start at 7:30 at Emerald Downs, a great, uh, activity and, and, uh, organization for our youth in the community. So I encourage anybody who can, uh, 7:30 on the 18th of July, Emerald Downs, to support that wonderful cause. And the last thing is, the next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is scheduled for next Monday, the 10th of July, right here in Council Chambers at 5 o'clock. And that's it.
All right, Councilmember Sepadoss?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too enjoyed my, um, the conference at AWC. Um, and what I gained from this conference is usually the fact that you are sharing and learning from other cities, what we're doing right, what they're doing right, and all the other information that we, that we, um, gained. So I'm thankful that I'm able to go. And yes, it was fun driving down and returning, coming back. Um, I, on a personal note, I'm involved in the, um, soccer tournament that's being held here from the Ethiopian community. And, um, I helped bring the soccer here. So we have over 10,000 spectators right now. Um, and, um, one of the things I found out this week is that I'm the first Ethiopian council member in the United States of America. So-
Wow.
Thank you, Federal Way, for making me the first.
Wow, that's great.
And so- Yeah, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to also give that credit back to my community and my city for believing in me and for me to be here with my colleagues and, uh, be, represent. So, thank you for that opportunity and, uh, that's my report.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Burbridge?
Thank you. I would like to, um, um, just give a note of appreciation to the councilmembers who were able to attend AWC this year. I, it's, it is truly a valuable conference and I know I personally benefited from, from attending a number of years. I, uh, I always look forward to it and, uh, look back to those, those days and having difficulty choosing between the programs, uh, because they were all so, so really beneficial. I also would like to, uh, point to another neighborhood parade that occurs on the Fourth of July. The Lakota Beach neighborhood has, uh, an event with a, just a very fine, informal neighborhood parade that's, that continues to grow strong. It's in its, I think, 37th year now. So that's another wonderful tradition in our, in our city. Um, and I also want to give a brief statement of thanks and appreciation to, for the Red, White, and Blues event this year. Uh, the people who attended benefited from the amazing preparation that occurred. It, it made all the difference, the staff, everyone who, uh, did so much work to make it the success that it was. But also the people who attended and their part, the way they participated made the difference. And in the end, our whole city was truly the beneficiary of such a fine tradition again this year. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Great meeting, everyone.